Board, we'd like to welcome everyone to the February 11th, 2013 meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Education. It's truly good to see this large group out here tonight and we appreciate your attendance and we look forward to the recognition period of the agenda tonight and have truly enjoyed the artwork out in the hallway here. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dwayne Knight, who's going to do our invocation.
Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts and we come together this day to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Help us make decisions that strive to be for the good of all Caldwell County schools. Bless each student, teacher, administrator, and staff member. And finally, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory be to you now and forever. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Next on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance and tonight we have students from Saw Mills Elementary School. We have Emma Ingram and her brother James Ingram and also Mackenzie Denning and her brother Peyton Denning. So if you'll all stand, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Emma, James, Mackenzie, and Peyton. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and the board has had the agenda here for a few days and have had a chance to look over it. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
This is the chairman. I approve. I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes and as you have noted in your agendas, we had two meetings. On the 14th of January, we had our regular board meeting and the minutes are in your packet. And we also had a closed session and your minutes are there as well. So we will vote on the approval of the minutes for the January 14th, 2013 meeting. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of the January 14th meeting?
I move we approve the agenda, the minutes on January 14th, closed and the regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we had our community board meeting and I might add a very good one at Hy-Brighton High School and we appreciate the hospitality of Mr. Caldwell and the Hy-Brighton High School staff. You have the community board meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion that we approve those as presented, January 28th meeting?
I move we approve the January 28th, 2013 community board meeting minutes.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Any questions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is the honors and recognition and certainly as I had already indicated, out in the hallway, you saw some really great artwork out there and we're going to be recognizing those people and others in just a few minutes. We're going to have student spotlight first and I'm going to turn it over now to Mrs. Libby Brown, our community relations director, and she will introduce this portion of our agenda.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce our student spotlight for this month of February and it is Katie Braswell, a senior at Hy-Brighton High School, and I had the opportunity to go to the school and tape her. And I think Katie's here tonight. Yes, there she is. So listen to the tape and you'll hear about it from her, what she's done at Hy-Brighton High School.
You know, Katie, if this doesn't work, you're going to have to stand up and tell us. I know you really are hoping it works.
It's a big honor to have you on as a spotlight for this school. I'm thankful you're there with colleagues and not letting me do that. In the past four years, I've been involved in beta club, art club, birth tomorrow club, journal club, and a few extracurriculars outside of school such as Girl Scouts and various other work. I played volleyball the sophomore year. It was a great experience. I played middle school and it was a totally different level here in high school. I loved working with girls that I got to play with. And junior year, I ran house country. I was named Caldwell County Girls' Athletic Year and I was making the all conference team, which was really exciting because I loved running and it was a bit on the team deck as well. And I ran chapin field that year too. I made it to regionals in all three environments. And that was a huge experience and it was very humbling because there's so many good experienced drivers out there that kind of figure out how you play some other competition. My sophomore year, I was able to take the journalism class here at Hy-Brighton, which is taught by Ms. White. And by the end of the semester, I was made editor in chief. I learned how to use the layout design and I basically helped with the newspaper, which was great because journalism was what I would make during when I was in college. And junior year, I was editor in chief as well. And junior year was a bit different in regards of the newspaper because it was a different teacher running it, but it was a good experience as well because I knew that not everyone is going to be on the same pay design, so I have to work with other people. The two teachers that influenced me the most at Hy-Brighton have been Mr. Arnold and Ms. White. Mr. Arnold was my freshman English teacher and he's been a friend of the family since he moved here almost seven years now. And Ms. White has been my English teacher, my journalism teacher, my creative writing teacher, and they have just been there through me, through everything these past four years. I really don't know what I would do if that were to happen. They're my shoulder to lean on, they're my people I go talk to, my advice, and they're just good about being there for you. I have a genuine respect and love for them, but they're now in South Korea, changing other people's lives, impacting other people's lives, and so I hope they're doing the best they can on that and I know they have. These past four years have definitely prepared me as I transition into college next year. I'll be attending East Carolina where I plan to major in mass concentration journalism. Again, I'd love to thank Hy-Brighton High School for not letting me ask you to spend this time. Thank you.
Katie, if you'll come forward. That was well worth the wait. I think we can all agree. And it was kind of a test. Since you're a communications major, we thought about bringing you to the podium, but you did an excellent job.
We want to congratulate you by giving you a certificate and having a picture taken with you, so thank you for that.
Congratulations to the Caldwell County Schools Spelling Bee winners announced at the recent Spelling Bee, an annual competition between middle school students that is sponsored by Lenore Kwanis. The board would like to recognize this year's winners, so as I call your name, if you'll please come forward for your certificate. Second runner-up, Kira Gleaton is, Chad's here, Chad Smith from Happy Valley. Would you like Chad to come up?
Yes.
Okay. First-
Spelling Bee worth a heat spell.
Well, I'm going to get to- (laughter) Yeah, I'm going to get to that point. First runner-up, Hannah Knoll from Granite Falls Middle School. She's here. And then our winner for this year, Caleb Deal from Hudson Middle School. So Caleb, come forward. And Caleb, as you move to the next level in Winston-Salem to compete in the regional spelling bee, try not to have any anxiety.[707.12][707.12](laughter) That was his winning word, okay? Believe it or not. Dr. Burns gets that one. She was our pronouncer. We are always impressed with the art pieces selected at the school level for display. Each month, new student artwork is featured in the education center art gallery. And the Board of Education is pleased this evening to recognize the artist among us tonight who created the beautiful paintings, drawings, and sketches on display in this building in February. We also applaud the excellent art instruction provided by the Caldwell County Schools art teachers with us tonight. So as I call your name, art students come forward and you'll get a certificate of recognition from the Board of Education. And we'll start with Horizons. Toni Petty and I think Martha Blackburn helps with the art there at Horizons and Teresa Hartley is the principal. So Toni Petty from Horizon. Then we have Whittenell Elementary School, Chase Jarvis, and David Hefner is the art teacher and Andy Berry is the principal at Whittenell Elementary. Granite Falls Middle School, we have Zach Phillips and I'm not sure if Zach is with us tonight. Principal there is Bill Schreiber and the art teacher is Sally Harrell. So there's Zach's artwork. Thank you for that. And Hudson Middle School, we have Brady Sheehan and Kelly Woody, I know she's here tonight, art teacher at Hudson Middle, and Bill Griffin is the principal at Hudson Middle. Want to take a little? Okay, parents, if you want a photo, come on up and get your photo.
Come on, Bill. Let's see if we can.
Put you in the middle. Just like that. There we go.
And we'll stay up here as long as cameras are going.
I don't know if you noticed, but Chase's picture was of the guy there and he said, "I am the boss" on the shirt. And so I asked him when he came through, I said, "So you're the boss? Are you the boss?" He said, "Exactly."
No doubt.
But it is outside my office.
Strategically placed. Okay, now we will feature some of our high school students. At Hy-Brighton High School, we have the artwork of Gracie Walker, Sky Raid Rothwell, and Suzanne Bradshaw. And the art teacher is Margaret Martini and David Caldwell is principal. So if any of those students are here tonight, can you see them, David? You want to come up and get their certificates? Okay. Also, we have South Caldwell High School students Lauren Hayes, Mackenzie Stutes, Mindy Wilkie, Patterson Weaver. So I see one of our students, two of those. Okay. Danielle Fall and Natalie Gualtney are the art teachers and Chris Ackerman is here tonight for South. He's the assistant principal. Okay, and then we'll end with West Caldwell High School and I see Jeff Link back there, principal. So perhaps some of your students are here tonight. Abby Herr, Erin Davis, Leon Ibarra, Sarah Reese. So, good crowd from West. And the art teacher is Kevin Abey. Okay, it's time to get some photos, parents, with the board members.
All right, we've got a large group, so come on over.
Is that good? Okay, let's give them all a round of applause. Okay, now we are going to turn our attention to some teachers and some schools. Congratulations to Beth Fox, project lead the way teacher at William Lenore Middle School, who has recently been appointed as National Master Teacher Apprentice for the 2013-2014 school year. Fox has previously served as a core training instructor for the PLTW Duke University Summer Academy. We'll let her go with that, okay? Once the master teacher apprenticeship is completed, Fox becomes a PLTW master teacher in the Caldwell County Schools and she will be training other teachers within our area, not just in the district but in the region. So we're very pleased to honor Beth Fox, who is with us tonight from William Lenore Middle School, our first master teacher in Project Lead the Way. Kelly Kane, a 12th grade seminar instructor at the Early College High School, has been selected as the North Carolina Veterans of Foreign War Teacher of the Year. And she actually has a stomach virus tonight, so she cannot, we told her she had to stay at home. So, but we're very proud of her and this accomplishment. So it's more William Lenore Middle School. So we're pleased to honor William Lenore Middle School because they became re-designated as a national schools to watch. This distinction is acclaimed by less than 1% of middle schools across the nation. The North Carolina Middle School Association and the National Forum to Accelerate Middle Grades Reform identified William Lenore Middle School as a national schools to watch in 2010. So every three years, they have the opportunity to go through this process again and be re-designated. So after three years, the school is eligible for re-designation. Initially, William Lenore was one of only three middle schools selected statewide and joined a national recognition process. So it's very elite for them to be in this recognition process and we're very proud of them. And Lisa Vaughn, principal, is here and I think she's brought some teachers and instructional facilitators with her and if you'll come up, please. We also have an employee from William Lenore Middle School, Olivia McAtire, if you'd like to come forward, please, and Debbie Eller, if you'd like to come to the podium, the CIS director. Teacher assistant at William Lenore Middle School has achieved national certification for site coordinators for communities and schools. And this is a great honor because if I'm not mistaken, you're the first in the county to complete this national certification. So we're very proud of you. And Debbie, would you like to say anything about Olivia?
Well, I'm going to read. I'm going to read. I'm going to read. We are very proud to announce that Olivia has completed the rigorous site coordinator certification program. It's the highest professional development offered by the Communities and Schools National Office. The program provides the communities and schools network with a standard of best practices and dropout prevention, making Olivia McAtire even better equipped to serve the students at William Lenore Middle. The online training program was launched by Communities and Schools National Office in 2010, thanks in part to a generous investment from Pepsi. Olivia is one of 17 in North Carolina that have completed the course and there are 40 counties that have communities and schools programs. When followed with the highest level of commitment, the communities and schools model is proven to be effective in reducing the dropout rate and increasing on-time graduation rates. Through the Site Coordinator Certification Program, Olivia McAtire has a larger set of tools to help her better follow this model and support the students of William Lenore Middle School. McAtire begins each day with the needs of her students first and foremost. McAtire is not only passionate about her work, she is passionate about the success of her students and we're very proud to have her as the first site coordinator to be recognized with this designation.
Think you can see why we're so proud of Caldwell County Schools. You just saw a small portion of that tonight and certainly at this time, if you need to leave, that would be an appropriate time to do so. Thank you for being here. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
CTE.
Yeah, CTE.
We're going to move on with the meeting. Next on the agenda is a public comment and as of 4:30 this afternoon, we had no public comments, so we're going to move on with Dr. Steve Stone at this point.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've got two items. The first is for information and I would like for Kathy Jo Eckert to come forward. February is the National Career Technical Education Month, in which we celebrate all the wonderful things that go on in our career technical education program. And Kathy Jo has brought some students, so I'm eagerly awaiting to hear what they have to say, but I'll turn it over to Kathy Jo at this point.
All right, thank you, Chairman Pennell, Dr. Stone, board. Appreciate the time this evening and as I spoke with Dr. Stone on my way in, I said, "Don't I have about 20 or 30 minutes because I can go on forever about CTE?" And he told me my time was short. So, but I do have two fine young gentlemen here tonight with me that can really express what they've accomplished in CTE and what it's done for them along with their student organizations. But I do want to comment on a couple of pieces of data and I was looking at our 11-12 school year data and we had our enrollment in CTE courses was over 8,000 students for middle school and high school. And most important is our graduation rate among our concentrators. And a concentrator is a student that takes a sequence or a career path of four courses with one of them being at least an advanced course. And those graduates that were concentrators last May or June, we had a 96.8% graduation rate. So I believe CTE does a lot to encourage our students to stay in school and also prepare them for college and career. So with me tonight, I have two fine young men and I'm going to introduce them. And these two were selected because they are state officers for their student organization. They are both region vice presidents representing Skills USA and FBLA, which is Future Business Leaders of America. So with me tonight is Dalton Crump and he's a student at West Caldwell in the engineering program, Project Lead the Way, and also with Skills USA. And we also have Mr. Ray Shell from South Caldwell High School and he is in business and computer education and an officer of Future Business Leaders of America. So I will ask Mr. Crump to come first.
My student organization is Skills USA. I competed in the interview contest at the regional and state level. I was also elected as the regional president as a freshman. This is my second year of serving as president. I plan to run for state office in April at the North Carolina Skills USA State Conference. Why am I involved in Skills USA? I'm involved with Skills USA because I know the significance of what leadership training can do for young adults. Both my older brothers are regional, state, and one was a national officer in Skills USA. Being in Skills USA was the reason my brother, Matt, was hired as a transition coordinator for CCTI, which led to his current job at Madeline Community College. This is what CTE is about, preparing young people for the world of work. CTE gives students credentials and skills that make them more employable. It gives students an edge above other applicants. Hands-on practice in the classroom and leadership training makes CTE students better employees. I went to my first national contest in Kansas City, Missouri, when I was seven years old. I knew then that I wanted to be a Skills USA officer. I also had the opportunity to go to the- and while still being entertaining. They're modified from conference to conference to keep it fresh and relevant. And their workshops are also held at the competition, so you're not just competing, and it actually makes it more worthwhile. At the competitions, you can choose to compete in basically any field of business. I've done things from business math to public speaking. This last year, I was, I did good enough at state competitions in Accounting I and was able to compete at national levels in San Antonio, and that was also the first time I got to do something with the state officer team. I thought FBLA was great, and getting to be an officer had just made it amazing. I think that FBLA is a perfect fit for any student who is thinking of going into business. And it also, FBLA made me interested in business, and it allowed me, it opened the door for all the CTE courses I've taken. I've taken 10 since I've been in high school, which is as much as I could take in while being in upper-level math. And I think FBLA and CTE courses have made me go to love business, and I've realized that I want to be an accountant through these classes. I'm currently taking Accounting II, which is the highest offered itself, and I plan on taking all that I learned through FBLA and CTE into the world and succeeding. I think that, I'm thankful that I've had the opportunity presented to me at the middle and high school levels, and that the county has supported FBLA and all CTE courses. Thank you.
Thank you all. If you have any questions of these young men, I'm sure they would be able to answer them for you. Right? Anyone have any questions?
We're just proud of what you're doing, and it sounds very exciting, and good luck in all that you do.
Thank you.
I want to know what made you decide that you wanted to go for State Office, because that's kind of a, kind of a stretch, and really wanting that had to be a huge piece of your personality. What made you decide that you wanted to do that?
I mean, well, if you're gonna do something, you might as well do as much as you can in it. Go big or go home.
Yeah. I like that.
How about you, did you, Michelle?
I really loved FBLA, and I was big involved in Scouts, and I was always a leader in that, and I felt like it would be a great opportunity to expand my experience with FBLA, and I thought it would just really improve me overall.
And one final question, just to follow up on that. Have you found that your experience with CTE courses and your leadership, have you found that it's kind of paid off in other areas as well? I mean, not just in Skills USA or FBLA, but have you been able to translate some of those into some of your clubs at school, or church, or family, or?
It's helped me with a lot with public speaking, and when I went to Leadership Camp last year, it helped me learn that I'm gonna be myself and not care what other people think about me.
I would like to commend both of you, two young guys, and I think it's fantastic that you took that step and is in a leadership role, and makes me very happy to see you, and wish you good luck, and I'm sure that both of you will go on and be leaders.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Bernie.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, this is just a fine example of some of the wonderful programs we have in Caldwell County Schools. But fellas, I wish you luck on your statewide office and your competitions, and thank you for representing Caldwell County well.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if we're moving at Item B1, and this is Proposed Revisions to Board Policy 4353, there are a couple of typos in here that we need to correct. This has been placed on the board's agenda. It was approved recently. We went back and changed a little bit of the language, and evidently in doing so, we may have confused some of the attorneys in Raleigh. So there's a couple of typos in there we'd like to correct, but I would like to propose that the board approve the policy and let us correct those typos, so we can put that out with principals. This is an important policy that deals with long-term suspensions, 365-day expulsions. So it's important that we have this in place, and we'll correct those typos, but I would like to recommend approval of Board Policy 4353.
Do I hear a motion that we approve Board Policy 4353 dealing with long-term suspension, full-year suspension, and expulsion for adoption tonight? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve Policy 4353, making note of some of the grammatical and typographical errors. As I mentioned to Dr. Stone earlier, I could tell Dr. Burns didn't read this one through. Dr. Burns and I are the two pickiest people on the planet, I admit it, so. But I think these don't have any substantive change to the policy, they're simply either grammatical or typographical.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, board members. Item two is a continuation of what we've been doing in the past, and that's our Board Policy Manual revisions. We have had the 7000B series, which is policies 7400 through 7950. We have had those out for one-month comment period. We've received no comment. And again, a couple of changes to the board policy. This is in the Personnel section of the Board Policy Manual, and you'll notice in the review from our attorney out of Raleigh, there are a couple of new policies, but basically, these were policies that were built into large policies that we've had in the past. So the recommendation was to break them out, so they could stand alone. So again, 30-day comment period, we've received no comment, so I'd like to ask the board to approve the 7000B series personnel.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve the 7000B series personnel, which is the partial from 7400 through 7950? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 7000B series personnel, partial 7400 through 7950, following its 30-day period.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And members of the board, in March, we will start bringing you the 3000 series. We started working on that. We've sent some suggestions back. Actually, we had the Carol Burns test, so we sent back pages and pages of suggestions, which is an excellent thing. She and her department looked at it. But we'll have those for the board, 3000 series, and there's only one set of those. So we'll have those for you in March for the first reading.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stone. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Trish Johnson, Associate Superintendent for Human Resource Services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, I have a few items for your attention this evening. Exhibit four includes personnel items that are usual and customary, but are presented to you for your attention only, for your information. Exhibit five includes usual and customary personnel items that require action. I respectfully recommend approval of these items as they have been presented.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 7000B series personnel, partial 7400 through 7950, following its 30-day period.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And members of the board, in March, we will start bringing you the 3000 series. We've started working on that. We've sent some suggestions back. Actually, we had the Carol Burns test, so we sent back pages and pages of suggestions, which is an excellent thing. She and her department looked at it. But we'll have those for the board, 3000 series, and there's only one set of those. So we'll have those for you in March for the first reading.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stone. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Trish Johnson, Associate Superintendent for Human Resource Services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, I have a few items for your attention this evening. Exhibit four includes personnel items that are usual and customary, but are presented to you for your attention only, for your information. Exhibit five includes usual and customary personnel items that require action. I respectfully recommend approval of these items as they have been presented.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the usual and customary personnel items as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, any comments? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
One last exhibit. Exhibit six includes student transfer recommendations for the month. We received 13 requests for student transfers. Of the 13 received, 12 are recommended for approval. If approved this evening, that brings our total board-approved transfers for the 2012-13 school year to 567. I respectfully recommend approval of the 12 transfer requests.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the 2013, 2012, 2013 student transfers as presented in your agenda?
I move we approve the student transfers as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have our Assistant Superintendent for Auxiliary Services, Dr. Jeff Church.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Stone, you have before you, under Exhibit seven, 2013-14 school calendars, draft calendars to be put out for public comment. The traditional calendar is a 180 instructional day calendar, with the start of school on August 26th, and the ending of school on June 12th. The Career Center and Erda College Calendar is a 180 instructional day calendar, the beginning of school August 7th, and the ending of school May 22nd. And if approved for a one-month comment period, we will disseminate that throughout the public. So I respectfully request this be given up for, or placed on 30-day comment period.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve for a 30-day comment period to 2012-2013, that'd be the 2013-2014 calendars? That would be the traditional, the Career Center, Middle College, and the Early College calendars as well. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we place these calendars presented on a one-month comment period, addressing traditional, Career Center, Middle College, and Caldwell-Erda College.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, have any comments, any questions?
Well, one of the things I think the public will see is a look at the traditional option here, is that we're going back once again to the General Assembly, and with the August 26 start date, and of course, the June 12th ending date. And once you have their beginning date and their ending date, you're kind of pushed into a corner as to what you can put in it and what you cannot have in it, too, so.
It's never an easy job.
There's not a lot of options.
And we appreciate your work. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Dr. Church, before you sit down, would you mind a little bit about the process of who works on the calendar, so people will know that it's not just you sitting down, you and Libby sitting down with the calendar, that it does have some?
Libby and I set up the Calendar Committee, and we have equal representation across the board. We have, we invite eight administrators, we invite eight teachers, teacher, teacher assistants, and then we also invite eight parents as well, and that's elected by the school each year, and it rotates each year. So we have a, we have a good, well-rounded representation as we develop this.
Very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Mrs. Carla Miller, our Finance Director.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, tonight I have three amendments to our budget for your consideration, and the good news is, there are three increases. They aren't huge increases. The First Amendment, which is Amendment Number Seven, is an increase to the State Public School Fund of $2,346, and it is for substitute reimbursement and technology interest. Budget Amendment Number Eight is to the Local Current Expense Fund, and it's an increase of $24,901, and that is for the Patterson Science Center School Store, the Patterson Science Center Challenge Course, which is a grant from Blue Ridge Electric for a ropes course, and then other miscellaneous revenues received by Patterson Science Center. And Budget Amendment Number Nine is to the Federal Grants Fund, and it's in the amount of $45,086, and Collettsville Elementary received a federal mini-grant. And I respectfully recommend that you approve these amendments tonight.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented to the State Public School Fund, the Local Current Expense Fund, and the Federal Grants Fund?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the three changes to the Grants Fund, the local fund, and the state fund as presented by Ms. Miller.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of Mrs. Miller? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for your information, I usually tell you this before you consider the amendments, I think, but since you've approved those, our current budget is now $116,581,899.51. I also have for your consideration tonight, Exhibit Number Nine, and that is our Audit Contract for 2012-2013. I can't believe we're already in the second semester of 2012-2013. The Audit Contract is with Boggs, Crump, and Brown, our current auditors, and they will do our audit and our financial statements for $33,450, and I do need to tell you that that's an increase of $650. And I checked, the previous three years, we haven't had an increase. I think it's been about five years, but they did increase their fee by $650. And I respectfully request that you consider their contract tonight.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the Audit Contract as presented in the agenda, and also as presented by Mrs. Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2012-2013 Audit Contract as presented.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Next on the agenda is some reports that we have. We, we have two reports from recent meetings that various school board members have attended. And of course, training and advocacy are two things that we are very much involved in, and they're very important to us. And first, I'm gonna let Mr. Knight speak to School Board 101.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On January 17th and 18th, I attended the North Carolina School Board Association's School Board 101 in Raleigh, and I brought my textbook with me. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer the meeting. The School Board 101 is an overview of the responsibilities of newly-elected School Board Members in North Carolina. Each of the over 800 School Board Members in North Carolina, and including our seven members, are required to obtain 12 hours of continuing education a year. Also, after each election or reelection, the board member is required to take an ethics course, a two-hour ethics course, ethics education. Mr. Ed Dunlap, North Carolina School Board Association's Executive-